Good evening, everyone. Good evening. And at this time, I'd like to call the Anacortes City Council meeting for May 24th, 2021 to order. Ms. Hunt, would you make note of the role?
Mr. Carter?
Here.
Mr. Young?
Here.
Mr. Walters?
Here.
Ms. Cleland McGrath? Ms. Moulton?
Here.
Mr. McDougall?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Gear?
Yes.
Ms. Cleland McGrath was just with us. I assume she'll be here shortly.
Okay, thank you. I'm gonna go to item 2A, but right before that, I wanted to bring up a letter that Councilmember Jeremy Carter sent to me today. And he has asked to be excused from... I'm trying to find this email, one moment. He's been asked to be excused from council meetings from June 2nd to August 3rd. This is so he has orders for training to become an officer in the Army. And Darcy looked into this, and as long as the council is willing to excuse, and I think it would be nine absences, Jeremy would be allowed to attend his officer training and not jeopardize his council position. So I wanted to bring that up tonight. And you could either vote to excuse this evening, or you could think about for a week, but that's the request on the table. And anyway, Councilwoman Carter, do you have anything you want to add to that?
That sums us up pretty good. I'll be in South Dakota for just a little over two months. And then I'll be right back here, right after, for the next couple of years.
And will I have access to a phone or any electronics? Is that correct?
Correct, yeah. Once we get there, all electronics, everything gets locked up.
Mayor Gear?
Yes, Mr. Miller.
Yeah, much like we let our city employees for military duty, I think it's pretty easy and it would make it a lot simpler that we're not excusing him for each meeting that comes up, so I would move to excuse Mr. Carter for those absences for his military training.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Miller, a second by Mr. Walters.
Mayor Gear?
Yes.
Just before proceeding the vote, I think the general rule is that council members can miss two meetings in a row on their third. That's an automatic disqualification from holding the office unless they're excused. There's no criteria for us to make that determination. It's at our whim, I guess. So this works, I think, from my perspective. Do I assume correctly, and maybe Mr. Carter can answer this, after that period, June 2nd through August 3rd, things will be back to normal and you'll be back in the office? Okay.
Correct. Now, even at commissioning, I'll still be in the area for the next two years.
And available to participate via remote or in-person if we're back to that?
I'll be in-person.
Okay.
Okay.
Hey, great.
Any other discussion?
No, you know, Mayor Gear?
Mr. Young?
I think it's important to recognize military service. It's so important to the country, it's so important to who we are and what we are and what we do. And I just think that this is an extension of that. Had there been an opportunity for him to participate otherwise, I think it would be expected, but it is not. And so in this case, I wholeheartedly agree.
Thank you. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Oh, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, Councilwoman Carter, enjoy your training. All right, we'll move on now to item 2A. It's my COVID-19 update. And as of May 24th, the governor has incorporated a new CDC face covering guidance into the state's guidance. This means that fully vaccinated individuals are not required to wear a mask inside or outside, except in a healthcare setting, correctional facility, homeless shelter, schools, and public transportation. Business owners may adopt an honor system and may assume that any customer who is not wearing a face covering has been fully vaccinated. Business owners and local authorities have the option to require that a customer wear a face covering, and that local authorities may not prohibit business owners from requiring that their customers wear a face covering. In Statute County, as of the 21st, which was last Friday, these are the latest numbers we have, we had 5,131 positive COVID cases in our county for the total period of COVID. We've had 73 deaths. I think we've had about five of those deaths within the last month. And we've had 331 people hospitalized. In our 98221 area code, we still believe there's somewhere in the 440 to 449 range of people that have COVID. Isla Hospital has tested 16,322 people. We've had a positive case there of 330, and they've admitted 62 people to the hospital. And we still have had zero fatalities. In the state of Washington, there's been 430,000 cases of COVID. There's been 5,747 deaths. In the United States, 33.1 million cases of COVID and 590,000 deaths. Worldwide, 167 million confirmed cases of COVID-19, including 3.47 million deaths. And that was reported to us by the World Health Organization. Any questions? All right, so we'll move on now to item 2B, which is our...
Mayor Gear?
Yes, Mr. Young?
No, I just wanted to ask a question, and it may be something that we need to discuss further. But I'm curious, in city departments, are we requiring masks? And then also just to juxtapose that to, let's just say, the library, and the library having the flow of people coming in and out. Are there mask requirements for that? I mean, I guess I'm concerned just simply because in certain situations, there are children and they're not being vaccinated at this point. And then the option to vaccinate is a question that I think as a city, we're gonna have to wrestle with at some point. So I wanted to hear your thoughts on it, or even if this is not the right venue for the later terms.
No, that's fine. We, as of last week, we gave instructions to all employees in the city to follow the governor's guidelines. If they've been vaccinated, they're no longer required to wear a mask. The library is asking, is acting somewhat like a business. We're assuming people that don't have masks have been vaccinated, and then staff can choose to wear a mask or not. Today, we received the latest guidelines from Labor and Industry on how to handle the employment situation. And that will be coming out in the next 24 hours from Admin Services, and we'll follow Labor and Industry. But I believe it'll be... The Labor Industry is asking us to keep a log. People will have to write in a log when they were vaccinated or show proof of vaccination not to wear a mask at work. She's taking those latest rules that just came to us and putting them in a city policy form, and that'll be coming forward. And that's as far as we've gotten at this point.
Got it.
Day by day, doing what we're hearing from the governor's office.
No, to your point that I understand the city and the city staff, in my opinion, have done a stellar job, not only continuing to work to, you know, make adjustments within that COVID shutdown, I just thought it was interesting. But I was also curious about, given the library have such a large influx of children which are not vaccinated, I was just trying to make sure that the thought process is for masks versus non-mask of children who are not vaccinated, because I think the cap is six years old or something like, or 16? And so I was just curious. We do have a lot of children and wanted to make sure that we consider that if we are to still allow masks to go forward for the children, or not?
Right, we're just... We don't follow the school category, so I think we've been depending on parents to do that, to have that role, but that's something we can discuss. We haven't taken any progress, but I'll bring that forward. We haven't... At this point, we were just following the rules that's handed to us, and it had nothing to do with us monitoring children and parents and all of that.
Yeah. You know, again, and my last point is, my thought was, given if we were gonna start back up full or whatever, lots of children are coming in and out. And, you know, so the assumption is that children are not getting vaccinated versus, you know, adults that are. So I just wanted to bring that up so we can have a discussion about it, or you and staff would. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Anything else on that this evening? All right, so we'll move on to item 2B, our Traffic Safety Committee report.
Mayor Gear?
Mr. Miller?
I'll take this one, because I bet Ms. Moulton has a bunch of other reports later. Traffic Safety Committee met last Tuesday. Some of the items we discussed. Gwemas Ferry Hallout always generates lots of excitement around parking. And I know it's inconvenient, but we also temporarily make, I think it's Sixth Street, one-way coming out of there to make it an efficient flow of traffic and try to increase pedestrian safety. There was a request to make it permanent, I think, to make that one-way. But there's a little more research to do before we would even consider bringing that to council for changing that. So we'll continue to look at that. Thirty, no particular order, 32nd and H complaints about running the stop signs there. We think we're gonna try an interim solution of putting very large stop signs there before we do some other ideas to help remind people to please stop at the intersection of 32nd and H. And then also, since we do have that roundabout project at M, to see how that might impact the traffic flow. There was a request by a developer for making Oaks View Lane one-way. I think we pretty much shelved that one because the rest of that area has yet to be developed, and we wouldn't want to even consider doing that until we know exactly what the rest of the street would be, that would be happening with the rest of the street. And, okay, K Avenue speeding concerns. In fact, I think that might be another council member's neighborhood who was there. But anyway, the APD said that they're gonna definitely take a look at that. So be careful if you're exceeding the speed limit on K. Don't drive too fast, because they might slow you down. Anyway, we did a speed study. Wasn't a lot of speeding, but there is some indications APD is gonna take a look. So I think that was it, unless Ms. Moulton missed anything. Thank you.
Mayor Gear?
Yes, Mr. Young?
Yeah, no, I just wanted to indicate to Mr. Miller and Ms. Moulton in the department, I've gotten a number of emails from some local constituents, truck drivers, that are absolutely trying to go down K, our avenue, toward, of course, the port. And what they're saying they're running into is that people are trying to get around them, so they're exceeding the speed limits on that. And so the truck drivers are getting very worried about it, because, again, they want to keep their job, not have an accident, and, but they're worried about the people sort of racing around. So in your meeting, at some point, would you mention that, and maybe there's a way we could discourage it, you know, and just sort of keep that safety thing? But very definitely going on, and a number of truck drivers, for some reason, reached out to me. So, thank you.
Okay. All right, we'll move on now to item 2C, our Housing Affordability and Community Services Committee report.
Mayor Gear?
Mr. Walters?
Our committee is continuing its work assigned by council in the 2021 budget ordinance to identify gaps in community services here in Anacortes. So last Wednesday, we hosted a large meeting with somewhere on the order of 40 or so representatives from community service providers. We heard a lot of good data, a lot of good stories. Our objective was to confirm or validate some of our preconceptions, to get more data, to get more insights, to find out what it is we hadn't already identified, the gaps in our own knowledge. And I think we definitely succeeded in some ways. So we heard quite a few stories. One was of a man who ended up homeless here in Anacortes and living in his car because he had to sell his house to get money to pay for his wife's care, because she had to go into assisted living. We heard anecdotal reports of seniors who aren't able to stay in their houses because of utility bill costs that they weren't anticipating. We heard that there is some reluctance on the part of landlords to rent to low-income people, because we're one of the only jurisdictions around that makes the utility bills the responsibility of the property owner rather than the tenant. So we're continuing to gather this information. We went through all of those service providers. Everybody had a chance to speak, and everybody spoke on all the various topics that we had on our agenda. Our next step is for our committee to meet again and to start synthesizing some of that information and figure out our steps beyond that. We will follow up with some of these service providers to get more hard data, numbers, those kinds of things, so we're not just working with anecdotes.
All right, anything else? All right, we'll move on then to item 2B, our Parking Recreation Committee report.
Mayor Gear?
Ms. Walton?
Thank you. The Parks Committee met last Thursday. It was Mr. Young, Mr. McDougall, and I, and staff members. And there's a lot going on at Parks as the spring progresses into summer. There is a resolution now to the Samish Tribe for the renaming of N Avenue Beach. Staff's waiting for a response from them. We are planning on doing some signage and cultural recognition of past and present in that spot and in others, potentially around town. So we're excited about that honoring of First Peoples here in Anacortes. We talked about the hiring process. The two full-time Parks Maintenance Staff Position application date closed last Friday. And as of Thursday, there were at least 25 applicants, so that's great. We'll have two full-time Parks Maintenance people. And also, the application for the Senior Center Administration. That period, I think, is about over too, so those hires are in process. And Parks also has two seasonal maintenance positions that are filled, and that has been a boon that has helped immensely to the entire Parks crew. So things are going along as they should and better already than they were last year with the cuts from COVID. So things are rolling right along. There are now reservations open for picnic shelters in June at Washington Park and Storvik Park. And there is talk of a Fourth of July parade and what those possibilities are depending on COVID. So things are starting to happen that way again, which is really exciting. The Whistle Lake Dam analysis is moving forward, and the geotechnical consultant, geoengineers, will be looking at that and working with ecology to figure out how best to analyze the condition of the dam and what needs to be done going forward. There is also a consultant working on the A Avenue cleanup. And there is now a new Frequently Asked Questions link on the Parks Department page. So when people are wondering what's going on with the A Avenue landfill, that there are some questions and answers there now that people can go look at. The cemetery is in Phase Two of the new redevelopment, waiting for specs to go out to bid by midsummer, and then the work should be by the end of August, early September. And the plans are really nice looking. There will be lots of trees and a columbarium, so it should be a beautifully developed property. Then, there's been some extra cleanup for Memorial Day weekend at Coslin Park, Washington Park, and the cemetery. So those spots will be looking extra beautiful for this coming weekend. The Depot Plaza restroom has opened. It's a wonderful amenity, and it's great for the whole town, but especially for outdoor events in that area. The rec programs are ramping up for kids and adults, including sailing. Bark in the Park is gonna be small this year. There'll be a pet food drive, and then the Kids Are Best Fest will also be smaller scale. So staff is partnering with the school district for booths and games, and probably gonna do it in conjunction with the Ready to Learn Fair that happens in August. So the department keeps adapting to changing recommendations, and they're excited to get the programs rolling. And the Senior Center is starting up again, very small scale. And thinking of an outdoor social event, maybe one each month in June, July, and August as a way to get people together again and start socializing in person. And they're also talking about doing intergenerational programming in the future, which would be super cool. And lastly, the Don Daniels family has donated $40,000 for volunteer park maintenance. That's a little bit, that's been not done. And so that's an opportunity to get some things fixed up at the park and make that look gorgeous again, too. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Great report. Any comments? All right, we'll move on then to item 2E, which is our Planning Committee report.
Mayor Gear?
Ms. McGrath?
Yeah, I will take on the Planning Committee report. So we met just before this meeting at 5:00. And we didn't have anything too serious to discuss, but it had come... I had a couple constituents contact me about code enforcement when it comes to parking RVs and boats and large work vehicles, either on the street or blocking sidewalks that should be open to the public. So we discussed that across the entire city and the history with it. Mr. Meesmer and the Planning Department had done some work in 2014 to try to work on kind of code enforcement, which is Title X. And we encouraged him, when he's completed some of the other major projects, to try to bring that back to life and have the Planning Committee vet it and then possibly bring it to council. Just because we, you know, we want to make sure that there's plenty of parking and our sidewalks are easily accessible for the neighborhoods. You know, the Planning Department's working on, right now, floodplain management and the R4 zoning alternatives, which should come to council sometime in June. But again, our major focus is the critical areas in the shoreline master plan, so that's still being dealt with from a staff level. We discussed a little bit about the parklets. It's gonna be coming up later on in the agenda, but just the fact that they've been really successful, that business owners seem to really appreciate them, and more businesses would like to put them in front of their spaces as well. We would like to work on some guidelines so that we have an understanding of expectations, and those guidelines can be applied fairly across the board and are clear. We've kind of been holding off on doing that, but I think it's something that we need to work on. And then the other thing is, hopefully, we can meet with some of the businesses who are currently using them and get some feedback if there's anything that we can do to, you know, enhance them or, you know, if they've got some things that they'd like us to work on. They've been really successful, so we're pleased that that has been, you know, a positive thing that the city and the LTAC dollars can do during this time. And I think that's it.
Mayor Gear?
Yes, Mr. Young?
No, just got a question for Ms. Cleland McGrath or any of the other members of that. Really, at one point, there were some business owners asking about, on the weekends, allowing one-way traffic, just so that it could, you know, one side of the street could be to encourage people walking and going down. Is that still under consideration or at least investigation to see if that's something that's doable? I understand that there are constraints and reasons why not, but I was just curious. It was brought up to me again, and I wanted to bring it forward.
I'm not hearing anything, so I think it has not been discussed. It's my guess, so maybe that's something that the Planning Committee can touch on.
That was the reason I just brought it forward. It was brought up to me again, and just wanted to see if that was something that the Planning Committee looked into and had thoughts about. So either way, I'm okay with it, but I just wanted to bring it forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Young? Oh, can I just say?
Go ahead.
My memory might be a little hazy, so the other Planning Committee members can correct me if I'm wrong. But I think part of the challenge is kind of the barriers that would be required to protect pedestrians in relation to the vehicles. I think the Planning Committee would like to explore it, but that was one of the challenges, right? And so how do you move them out and bring them back, and timing and things like that? But myself, I mean, I would be happy to continue to explore it and discuss it. I think it would, anything that helps kind of folks walk around and support more of our local businesses is a good thing. And I think we've seen that with those parklets.
Okay. We're now gonna go to item 2F. And this is the Former Water Treatment Plant Cleanup Ecology Public Comment Period Discussion. And Ms. Walton is gonna update us this evening. Thank you.
Thanks, Madam Mayor, members of council. I am here to give you an update on the water treatment plant demo and an upcoming public comment period that the Department of Ecology is hosting. And I'm gonna share a couple of slides because there are a number of details. So let's see if I can... Can you all see my screen here?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. So I just wanted to, just as a reminder, this is a graphic that goes through the overview of the formal cleanup process. And this is the process that the city has worked with the Department of Ecology on for the past several years. The phase that we are at right now in the process is the kind of first layer of green, where there is a cleanup action plan. And that's the, kind of the step that we're gonna be looking at public comment on over the course of the next month. So this is the front page of a notice, a fact sheet, that the Department of Ecology has put out that provides information on how members of the public can submit comments to the Department of Ecology. There are three documents that are available for people to review. The first is the Cleanup Action Plan, which the city and the Department of Ecology have both agreed on in its draft format. There is also the Draft Consent Decree, which has also been approved by both Department of Ecology and the city. And then there's the SEPA Determination of Non-Significance for the Project. So the, kind of the main point of my update tonight is just to get as much visibility to this comment period and how the public can engage with the Department of Ecology. There's gonna be a meeting coming up that is gonna be hosted by Ecology on June 7th, and it's gonna be from 4:00 to 5:00 p.m. This flyer, this is just the first of several pages that has information on the site, is gonna be added to tonight's packet. And there are links to the Ecology websites that provide all of the information on how to participate in the meeting and also how to submit comments electronically. So some key details here of the upcoming public comment period. So it is a Department of Ecology process that invites comments on the Cleanup Action Plan and the other associated documents. The timeframe for those comments is June 1st through June 30th. The public meeting is gonna be held on June 7th at 4:00 p.m. with about an hour-long presentation from Ecology and opportunity for questions from members of the audience. I put the website here for Ecology's website, or I'm sorry, the web address for Ecology's website. And that's the site that's specifically set up for this site. And so this has information on how to access that public meeting. It also has the link to provide written comments and copies of all of the documents that people can provide information on. Some additional information is available on the city's website. Has a link to a website that we set up for this project. It's called safencleannwater.com. It has links to all of the reports and investigations that have been done to date on the site. And it's a great source of information. So just to kind of remind everybody of where we are on the status of the water treatment plant site, we did negotiate and agreed order with the Department of Ecology, and that really laid out the process for the MOCK cleanup work that's gonna be happening. The city spent a considerable amount of time doing a really thorough remedial investigation and feasibility study. And that really informed what the Cleanup Action Plan will be for the site. And so the city... And so the city proposed and Ecology approved a draft cleanup action plan. We've also, as I said, worked with Ecology to approve a draft consent decree. And this 30-day public comment will be there to solicit public feedback on, on those items. So that's the update. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have, but I just want to make sure that we get as much visibility to this upcoming public process as possible so that, you know, Ecology can get the best, the best feedback they can to make sure that, that the city's doing the best job it can on its cleanup of this site.
Are there any questions for Ms. Swetner? Thank you, Ms. Swetner, for the update. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, if this time, we will go to public comment. And if you would like to speak to the council about anything that is not on the agenda tonight, go ahead and raise your hand. All right, I see no hands raised, so we'll move on now to item four, which is our consent agenda, A through D.
Mayor Gere.
Mr. Miller.
I, I apologize for not asking this in advance, but I assume that because there's no dollar amounts on those C and D, that they're below the mayor's approval threshold for contract. Do you know the answer to that, or I bet a staff member online could probably?
I need a staff member to answer that question. Thank you. That would be, I know the first one is well below, because that's for the, those are the maritime, you know, the Christmas lights.
Yep.
Telecommercial. And the second one, I think Mr. Buckamire or Ms. Swetner is going to have to answer that.
Yeah, I, my apologies, I'm not looking at the contracts themselves, but if there was, if we include just the resolution and not the contract for approval, it's sub that $45,000 figure.
Yep, just making sure, I move to approve consent agenda items A through D.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Thank you, Mr. Young. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. All right, we're moving on to item five, which is a public hearing, but this public hearing is on the critical areas. This item has been continued to our June 7th, 2021 meeting. Mr. Miesmer, do you have anything to state at this time on that?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, we're looking forward to continuing that conversation. We will have everything in the packet ready for that June 7th meeting. Thank you.
All right. Just making sure. All right. So that public hearing will be continued. So now we're on to item six, it's under other business. And I, item six A is Resolution 3033 authorizing the execution of a tourism promotion fund contract by the City of Anacortes for the purchase of two new parklets. And this is an action.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council and the audience. Resolution 3033 is for the use of lodging tax funds to purchase two more parklets. The parklets have been hugely successful. We hear from the restaurants frequently how much they appreciate them. We've also had four jurisdictions in Washington State contact me asking where they can get them and, and how the process works, because they've been in visiting our great town and noticed how well they like them. So they, typically you would see a resolution of this nature on the consent agenda, and what has happened here is that in, we originally got the estimate for the parklets, April 5, 21. Since that time, steel costs have increased dramatically. And so the cost for these two parklets has increased from $24,786 to $26,568, an increase of $1,782. We have looked at this based on that increase and would like to get these ordered. There's about a four to six-week lead time on them. And so staff recommends approval. Again, I wanted to make sure the council understood that since our original estimate, it's gone, they've gone up a little bit. We have communicated with Mr. Hoagland, he sees no issue with this. And the lodging tax advisory committee will be reaching out and letting them know that the, has gone up a bit as well. That, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those. If not, your pleasure.
Mayor Gere.
Mr. Young.
No, just a quick question for Mr. Miesmer. These are just really like flying off the shelf, if I can use that expression. Do you foresee other businesses along the corridor also asking? And, you know, and at some point, I guess, you know, the question is how many more can we afford to put out there? And, but I, I do find them to be very popular, so I just wanted your opinion on that.
Thank you, Mr. Young. So we've actually had a couple of other businesses reach out to us, not restaurants, but retail, a couple of retail businesses. Our planning committee has suggested that we look into some policies and try to put those together as soon as possible so that we have something formally adopted by the council on how we approach the distribution and/or denial of such a project.
You answered my question. Thank you very much. And unless there's any other further question from the council, I move to approve Resolution 3033 authorizing the execution of the tourism promotion fund contract by the City of Anacortes for the purchase of two parklets.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Young, a second by Mr. Walters. Ms. Hunt, would you take the vote?
Excuse me, Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Walters?
Yes.
Ms. Cleland McGrath?
Yes.
Ms. Moulton?
Yes.
Mr. McDougall?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Ms. Hunt. Now we're moving on to item six B. This is Resolution 3035. This is waiving the state competitive bidding requirements for the purchase of parklets from Darryl Bike Racks. This is an action item. Mr. Miesmer, do you want to tell us about that company?
Thank you, Mayor. So Darryl Bike Racks isn't the only one that makes parklets, of course, but they are the only ones that make the ones that we have been using in our downtown area. So the idea is that we have a consistent approach to the parklets so that as you drive up and down commercial or you walk on the sidewalks, they all look the same. And from everybody we've spoken with, I've spoken with, that's the approach that they prefer.
Mayor Gere.
Mr. Walters.
I think that is a pretty critical component to their success. Details matter. Appearances matter. Beyond just the parklets, I think it, it's really critical that they all have the same roof structure. And I understand we've sort of fallen into that, but we've achieved it. So good for us. I, I definitely think that this makes sense to make sure that we're buying the same ones going forward. And consistent with something Mr. Miller brought up earlier, I do think when we are waiving competitive bidding requirements, we ought to identify what the potential financial impact of that is. And we'd added that to talk about it our next finance committee agenda. Maybe prescribing a standard format for these types of things so that we know what, what level of financial impact we're potentially getting into. But for this one, it seems pretty straightforward. I move approval of the resolution as presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Walters and a second by Mr. McDougall. Is there any other discussion? Ms. Hunt, would you take the vote?
Mr. Walters?
Yes.
Ms. Cleland McGrath?
Yes.
Ms. Moulton?
Yes.
Mr. McDougall?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. So we're moving on now to item six C. It's our annual comprehensive plan and development regulations amendments docketing process. And this is a special item. And Ms. Gate, Gratch, are you going to do this tonight?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and good evening, everyone. I'm going to just share my screen here. Can everyone see that? Thank you. Yes, thank you. It's my pleasure to be here this evening to introduce the comprehensive plan and development regulations annual amendment process. My intent this evening is just to provide an introduction to the annual amendment docketing process and to answer questions and invite any feedback that the city council has regarding the items and schedules that we'll be discussing. My presentation will include a brief background on the statutory authority and local regulations governing the legislative amendment process, including the steps in the docketing process. I'll also give a brief overview of the amendment requests that have been received to date for comprehensive plan amendments. I'll talk about the next steps in the amendment docketing process. And finally, go over a high-level review of the Planning, Community, and Economic Development Department's draft legislative work plan for the 2021 and 2022 timeframe. So the City of Anacortes plans under the Growth Management Act, which requires development of a comprehensive plan and implementing development regulations. The comprehensive plan is a broad statement of Anacortes community's vision and values for the future. It is general in nature and provides broad policy direction for the community's growth over the next 20 years. Development regulations are specific regulations that are used to, excuse me, that governed uses and development of land. They're required to be consistent with and implement the comprehensive plan. Under the Growth Management Act, the comprehensive plan and development regulations are subject to continuing review and evaluation. And the mechanisms for that continuing review and evaluation are, excuse me, mandatory periodic updates. And those are required typically every eight to nine years. The City of Anacortes last completed our periodic update, well, a portion of it, in 2016, when we, the council adopted the 2016 comprehensive plan. And we're still working on the critical areas regulations update, which are a component of that, that periodic update. The next periodic update under the Growth Management Act will be due in 2025. And then the optional annual amendment process provides an opportunity for anyone to make suggestions for amendments to the comprehensive plan or development regulations. Amendments that are proposed in this manner are required to be reviewed concurrently so that we can gather the cumulative effect of the proposals. And adoption of amendments to the comprehensive plan can only occur once per year with some limited exceptions. Anacortes Municipal Code, Chapter 1916 Legislative Actions establishes the program and process for early and continuing public participation for land use legislation consistent with the Growth Management Act. And this chapter applies to the adoption of comprehensive plan, comprehensive or amendment of comprehensive plan, comprehensive plan, future land use map, and the implementing development regulations. And then this chart here shows an overview of the annual amendment docketing process that's laid out in 1916. So petitions for amendments must be submitted by members of the public by the last business day in March in order to receive consideration under that particular year's docket. The Planning Commission then reviews and makes recommendations on which petition should be included in the year's docket based on criteria that's outlined in section 1916050, subsection B of the municipal code. The next step is for, once the department's completed its recommendations, the next step is for the city council to hold a public hearing to hear from both the petitioners and members of the public regarding the staff's recommendations on the docketing for each petition. The next step, number four, is for city council to, after the public hearing, is for council to decide to include, exclude, or defer each petition. And then, once the year's docket is set by resolution, the docketed petitions then continue through the review process, which includes Planning Commission, or excuse me, environmental review, Planning Commission review with a public hearing recommendation, and ultimately back to city council for review and action. So this table is showing the three citizen-initiated petitions that were received in 2020 for amendments to the comprehensive plan. The first here is from Evergreen Islands, and that proposal would add two new policies to the housing element related to regulation of short-term rentals. The Second Amendment request received is from Thomas Skillings, and that request was to change the future land use map designation in the comp plan of a portion of property that Mr. Skillings owns on the southeast corner of the intersection of 35th Street and V Avenue. And the proposal is to change that future land use designation from industrial to residential medium density. And then the third request is from Ryan Walters and proposes to add a new goal related and related policies to the utilities element to increase recycling and composting to 65% of the municipal solid waste stream. So all of these documents that have been submitted are available in links within the staff memo that was provided in your packet. And then also in the slide presentation, there's a direct link to the website here where you can, where the public can review all of those petition documents. So just really quickly, here are the proposed next steps in the annual amendment docketing process. So at this point, staff is proposing a target date of June 9th for the publication of the planning department's recommendations for docketing on each of the amendments. And then also, the notice of public hearing would be published on June 9th. A public hearing before city council could be held on June 21st with the written comment period ending on June 23rd. Potentially council could then, after the public hearing and, and close of the public comment period, council could decide on the docket in the July timeframe. And then the docketed amendments would continue on through the review process with SEPA, environmental review in August, and then Planning Commission review and recommendation in the September, October timeframe with city council reviewing and adopting potential amendments at the end of the year, November, December. I apologize if this is a little bit small to read. It was hard to get it all on one screen. But in addition to the annual amendment requests received, the planning department's work plan includes multiple legislative projects that are in various stages of development and review. And we just wanted to- And we just wanted to, to put them all out there so that the public can see what's being worked on right now in one spot. Um, and also to kind of give a preview of some of the, the projects that are coming up. So the projects that are included in this list are either mandated by state law to occur as part of a periodic review cycle. The list includes housekeeping and procedural amendments to enhance clarity and internal consistency of development regulations. And there are also priority projects identified through, um, some of the feedback that we get from community members, other staff, and planning commission and city council members. So we're, work on these items will be occurring alongside the annual docket items, uh, staffing workload permits. And we'd really appreciate, uh, city council's feedback on whether there's anything missing from this list. Um, and then I can just go through really quickly and touch on each of these briefly. So, um, you're all familiar with the critical areas ordinance update, and that's currently being reviewed by city council. Uh, the shoreline master program periodic update is, uh, also, um, has not been to council yet, but it's, uh, one of the, um, ma- state mandated periodic updates. And right now, the status is that the draft amendments are being reviewed by the Department of Ecology. And they will make a determination, initial determination of concurrence on the proposed amendments and whether the amendments meet the, uh, Shoreline Management Act goals and policies. So once staff gets, uh, some feedback from Department of Ecology, we'll integrate any feedback if necessary into the draft documents. And then that draft SMP will go back to Planning Commission for a recommendation to city council. So city council hopefully should be seeing that soon as well. The R4 bonus height issue, as, um, I think Mr. Muzimer mentioned, will be coming back to council soon for a review of potential concepts and ways to address community concerns. And Mr. Muzimer did mention the FEMA flood plane code update. Those updates are currently being drafted consistent with the Department of Ecology guidance. And we'll be moving forward to Planning Commission here in the next couple of months. There are some technical updates that staff will be proposing to, uh, remove references within the comprehensive plan to various plans that aren't necessarily needed to be incorporated by reference. Um, and also some updates to titles and dates within that section of the comprehensive plan. Okay, next one is, um, some updates to the land use permit application procedures and updates. And, um, that is the table within the Anacortes Municipal Code, which outlines the, um, various permit types and applicable review procedures. There are some proposed updates within the critical areas regulations, um, that will necessitate some, some updates to those, uh, procedures. And also, we're doing a thorough review to make sure that, um, we have internally consistent procedures in place for both shoreline and critical areas development. And then finally, down at the end of the list here, um, we've got the, uh, updates, potential updates to the tree preservation code and short-term, uh, vacation rentals and regulations update. So, uh, quite a few items on the list, as you can see. And to, to wrap up, just a reminder that we're not really asking for any council action this evening, but, um, would just like to have a discussion and invite your feedback on the docketing schedule um, and also on the planning department's work plan moving forward. So I thank you, and that concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer questions. And I think Dawn is still here as well.
Mayor Gear.
Ms. Miller.
I, I think the schedule makes sense. It lines up with about halfway, uh, when we're all said and done, hopefully about halfway through our comprehensive plan mandatory review process. So it, it, it looks, it looks okay to me, and I don't, I don't really have anything. But I, I, I would encourage, like I will, is to look for anything that might be missed. And other council members, I hope, will do the same thing, um, as we, as we go through the review.
Thank you. Anybody else?
No, Mayor Gear.
Mr. Young.
No, my only comment is, you know, I, I agree with Ms. Miller on this, and I think that it really does, um, look, you know, good from the standpoint of all of the issues that need to be addressed. I am very glad to see that we are also beginning to address short-term rentals. Those are, have been a big discussion and I think growth in our area. And I think having some type of understanding and how we deal with it as a city is important. So I just, I'm glad to see that on the list as well.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Mayor Gear.
Mr. Walters.
Uh, I, I think that the schedule looks good and the accumulated projects as categorized there look good. I also anticipate that there will be a large number of other little errors in the code that Planning surely has identified along the way. Uh, a suite of miscellaneous code updates, and I would like to see Planning bring those forward as well. You know, if there's a, if there's a provision that says you have to have a mandatory bike rack and somebody wants to put it on the roof of their building instead of on the ground, let's make sure that we address that through the code so we don't have to do it through interpretation. Stuff like that, let's, let's hit those things.
Yes, thank you, absolutely. We, we do have a running list, um, of, of several items, um, and I'm happy to, to bring those forward during this process.
Thank you, Ms. Bridge.
Mayor Gear.
Yes, Ms. Walton.
Thank you. The only thing that I would like to add is, um, I think it's a great plan. Thank you, Ms. Bridge, for your excellent presentation. Um, the short-term rentals policy and regulations update involve 2022. I think that's reasonable, but again, with our housing situation in Anacortes and Skagit County, it's almost in a, at an emergency level with fewer than 1% vacancy rate and the cost of housing. I would like to see that a little sooner if possible. Maybe we'll get an idea, um, if we talk about this amendment request for promoting neighborhoods and affordable housing and, um, regulation of short-term rentals. If that's something we discuss, maybe that'll sort of be, uh, an intro into what we're thinking about that as a city. But I think that that is, it's pretty urgent. Thanks.
Thank you.
Mayor Gear.
Yes, Mr. Walters.
Well, um, to address what Ms. Walton just spoke about, short-term rentals, I, as I understand it, are not allowed in any zone today. So we can't really go in a direction from there to improve housing affordability. What are we proposing to, um, how are we proposing to address this in the code in 2022?
Yes, thank you, um, Mr. Walters. Um, that's correct. The short-term vacation rentals are not allowed within most, uh, residential districts at this point. Um, they are permitted, I believe, in, uh, multifamily zones in R4. Um, and also within commercial districts and existing, uh, residences. And so, um, and then we, we also have some, uh, short-term rentals that were previously permitted prior to, uh, 2019 through business license permitting that we need to, uh, think about how to deal with those as well. So staff's thought was that we would put together, um, sort of a, a white paper, gather information about the, the current situation with short-term rentals in town. How many are there? What types of structures are people, uh, using for short-term rentals? Are they accessory dwelling units? Are they, um, individual rooms within a home? I'm just trying to put together a baseline understanding of, of, of what's out there. Um, and then start to think about moving forward. You know, whether the regulations should be changed to allow them in certain circumstances, um, or not. And, and so that's, we're just very, in the beginning stages of information gathering on that topic.
Okay, so then there, there would be a direction like Ms. Walton suggests that could improve affordability by addressing R4 and also maybe an amortization period for the existing licensed rentals. Good, good. I would also be in favor of moving that up if we can, although all the other things on the list are pretty high priority.
Indeed. Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? All right, well, thank you, Ms. Bridge, and we'll look forward to as we continue through this process. So that brings us to our final item this evening, item 6D. This is open to public comment. This is our wastewater treatment plant solid handling report. This is the discussion items. Mr. Buckmeyer.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Most of you got, I sent a memo out earlier, uh, or late last week, so most of you got that. But just as a way of recapping, perhaps for someone that didn't get the memo, or, or maybe just to provide a background for the evening, I'll kind of recap it. So we had several long discussions with our consultant, or, or, um, our current consultant, Brown and Caldwell, following the last several city council meetings. And they have recommended that we don't move forward at this time with the shortlisting of the solid wastewater solid waste handling process. Just to reach back a little bit, maybe set the stage a little bit more. Late last year, we were presented with an opportunity for a reduced cost future replacement for our wastewater solids incinerator. And as council may remember, we responded to that opportunity by sending a no obligation letter of intent to, uh, research and look at that project and determine if it would, might meet our needs, uh, in the future. Uh, and then skipping forward, uh, last Monday, we, we've got an in-depth look at, or at least a, a deeper look at all the options available to us. So just to be brief background, we were expediting that shortlist process in an effort to reduce cost. As the mayor and council are aware, it was a pretty significant cost savings. Uh, there's, there's an upcoming grant opportunity that was, uh, that would have provided a 50% coverage of the already reduced construction cost. And in addition to that, there were some low-interest loans that would have, um, given us, uh, on the 50% that's left, would have given us a 25% principal forgiveness. Brown and Caldwell does not believe that there is going to be sufficient time for them to prepare a robust competitive grant application at, at this point. And, you know, to kind of, I, I put chasing the money down there as, as item number three. It felt a little bit like we were chasing the money and, and maybe getting ahead of ourselves a little bit. It's, it's my job to bring stuff, opportunities like that to the council. So I don't regret doing that, but, um, but still, that, that's, that's what it was doing. And, you know, uh, construction cost savings is not a real compelling reason to expedite a shortlist decision. It's, it's a good reason, but, but not, not a compelling reason. And, you know, construction cost is going to be a, a component of any decision that we, that future decision. And while it's not certain, there might, there certainly might be opportunities for grants in the future. We, we don't know. I think of, also of note, um, that I didn't put down in this, uh, memo is that Brown and Caldwell's policy does not allow them to make technology, um, recommendations to their, to their clients, which was, wow, it was just disappointing to me, to be honest with you. They also don't allow, that policy does not allow them to give rough cost estimates at this stage, too many, too many variables. Those were two things I was looking for, to be honest with you. That would have helped, helped me make a decision, but, but that's, uh, was beyond, beyond their reach. Let's see, so, uh, I, I went on to say, you know, doing nothing really isn't an option. Uh, it takes about five years to get this thing, to get anything up and running. By the time we get it, you know, a, a decision made and, and, uh, you know, to get it fully functional, run it, run it for a year before we tear the old one down, kind of a thing. So there's, there's, uh, there's that. Um, we're, we're, you know, we are continuing to see problems with the current incinerator. So this, on that theme, that doing nothing isn't an option. Um, from about 2001 to 2010, we, we saw about $55,000 a year in unexpected, um, maintenance. Stuff we didn't expect to see happen. Then from 20-
Per year? That's per year?
Per year, yep.
Okay.
And then from 2011 to 2020, we're, we're starting, we've, we've seen about $250,000 per year of unexpected, you know, things that happen. And we, you know, we can expect that cost will go up over the years. Let's see, 2027, um, the national regulations on air emissions for wastewater solids incinerators are going to reach a threshold that will probably financially force us into a new process. Uh, I think Mayor Gear asked me last time, how long can we keep this thing running? We'll keep it, we can keep that thing running for a long time, but it might just not make sense. After 2027, it would really behoove us to have something in place fully functional, uh, before those regulations hit us. Let's see, so, so that really is my recommendation moving forward. I think by the end of this year, 2021, we should have our decision made and start that five-year process for approval, design, construction, um, you know, all, all that stuff. Typically, the next steps would be, uh, get a shortlist of five. Narrow that down to three. You choose a preferred alternative, and then you submit that engineering report to the Department of Ecology that has those three, um, those three options in it with a, with a, pretty much a deep dive into each one of the three so that, um, they can look at it. So Department of Ecology has to approve whatever we, whatever we, whatever we think we might want to do. They still have to approve it. Then we start the design process, and then we determine funding alternatives, and then we bid it and build it and run it and all that kind of stuff. So with that, I'm going to stop and, and, and listen. Thanks.
Mayor Gear.
Mr. Walters.
Fred, thanks for bringing this forward to us. It's, it sounds like we are going to really need to keep on this throughout the rest of the year so that we maintain your schedule, uh, which certainly makes sense to me. Of getting this going so that we have enough time to replace it before air quality standards change such that we're in trouble. I do think that we would still benefit from a little more data on existing incinerator costs. Because that might motivate us to move faster. I mean, I accept the, the proposition that we need to replace the incinerator. Uh, but still, that background is useful for justifying it to ourselves, to the public, and maybe, uh, expediting the process if we have the opportunity to do that. I sure think that cost of the new technology is an important factor, and maybe we need a consultant that can provide us detail on that. I, I recognize the hesitancy of, of giving a cost estimate, but, you know, last time around, we were talking 10 million or 20 million. A cost estimate with 100% margin of error, I would think we could commit to something in that range, right? It matters. Uh, and to me, the upfront cost, the capital cost upfront doesn't matter so much as the total cost of ownership. If it's cheaper upfront but more expensive for maintenance, you know, that's a trade-off. If it's more expensive upfront but less expensive for maintenance, that's a trade-off. And, and we just need to do the math and see what the total cost, uh, works out to be. I, I think that this, this memo and the outline you've provided here is a good start to that decision-making process. But I feel like we have a lot of work still to do.
Yeah, yeah. Agreed.
Mayor Gear.
Mr. Young, then Mr. McGugl.
No, I just wanted to echo what Mr. Walters said and, uh, also give my appreciation to the work that was put into bringing this before council. You know, the reality is that- To the work that was put into bringing this before council. You know, the reality is that. Cost is a big factor, but there's also another factor that we really have to determine. And that is how much the impact, whether it's the environmental impact. What we're releasing into the air, what choices we have. I just think those environmental considerations. Are something that will be high on my list as we weigh out cost versus processes. And what will work for us. I just want us to make sure of that, but, you know, I do appreciate. The chasing of the money, as you said, Mr. Buckmeyer, that is always a good thing for a city to chase money as well. But also putting on the brakes when it doesn't work for us too, which is what happened in this case. So thank you.
You're welcome. Yeah, thank you.
And then it was Mr. McGlue.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I wanted to actually, I'd like to reiterate what Mr. Young said, Mr. Buckmeyer. I've always appreciated your. Sort of ability to look for opportunities and find a find ways to to create some advantages, so I appreciate that creativity. And a quick question, so just to clarify, the one, we're basically eliminating the hydrothermal liquefaction option. From the the list, correct? No, we're not.
I hope not. No, no.
Oh, okay. We're just not going after grants for it.
Unless they pop up again, we have that we've 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 sort of. I guess, I guess this decision is we're not going to seek that grant opportunity in 2021.
Got it. Okay, okay. So essentially then, it's, does that change the waiting? Like that that color coded sheet that we have, does that change its weighting and its score there? And also, was there a was there a follow up or like there's a another sort of staff waiting where the there's a waiting of the waits? Or did or did I misinterpret that from last meeting?
Okay, a couple of questions there. So. The 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 scale of the universe of options that we saw with the weights on it. Cost wasn't. You know, the fact that that there was a funding opportunity for the HTL didn't really factor into that into that waiting. Okay.
Okay, so it's it's scored wasn't based upon potential grant.
Correct, yeah, but but that did include at least some attempt at at, you know, staff and and committee waiting, but. I'm I'm gonna, well. Maybe I'm fresh out of recommendations, but if I had one more, it might be to that we need to do the etch a sketch and. Kind of start over again and see where we see where we end up with. Yeah.
So, Mr. Buckmeyer, the hydro. Liquefaction while we were looking at hydropermeable. That is, is that, we still don't know that that's proven technology, is that correct? And will that be something that will be proven out by the end of the year, so it stay on the options?
Yeah, proven technologies, so it is in the process of being used. In Costa Mesa, California and in Canada. Costa Mesa, California is a very large. Like an order of 10 magnitude larger than our wastewater plant.
So that's up and running now?
No, it but it would be by the time we would have acquired it, right? So it would be, it would have been running there for like two years, and all the bugs worked out, and we would have, we would have been, you know.
Yeah, but if we're asking for a plan for going into next year. That we still wouldn't know that by the end of this year.
That's that's very true, yeah.
All right.
Mayor Gear.
Yes, Mr. Miller.
So moving forward, first of all, yeah, I appreciate the memo, and you're saying all the things that we were probably. All all thinking about as being being rushed to rush to spend on a very large project. But clearly, you're going to have some budgeting numbers for next for. Midterm to study, you know, where we're going to help us get our heads around which way to go. But a couple of points that I remember in 2018, we spent $1 million specifically. On the scrubber, the air scrubber, and it was primarily wasn't due to failure of the system. It was. Change in the mercury mercury output of our system. So I wa- I would love to, you know, to know the bookend, like zero mercury for FBI. You know, is that technology out there as a potential? So things, and then also the nitrogen. Regulation is coming because we're we're thinking about these regulations, but, you know, let let's bookend it so we can see what technology. Maybe FBI is not, you know, out 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 the door. You're capable of burning things and keeping it clean. It is possible. So I just, I I I just worry about, we we always chase this wonderful new technology when we have stuff that works. But I guess my final point is because we're. To remind people how we fund these, but it's bonds, it's it's not just grants, it's bonds and it's and it's and it's rates. You know, so that's something we have have to think about, and I also class A and B. Products that come out of there, I I just assume that we can't sell, you know, when we when we, worst case. We have a hard time selling because there's a lot of systems that are out there that have a hard time selling that product. It it sounds good, but. But I think this, all in all, this gives us a really good foundation, as council anyway, to think about what the what the future. Needs to be that we're we're thinking about this rather than an hour to think about it and try to come up with a. With a recommend recommended solution. So again, thanks for the work on this.
You bet. You appreciate it. Yeah, thank you.
I I do have to add to that conversation that today. Shell reached out and said, they read the article about our discussion last week, and they said, you know, don't forget about us. If you've got a product, we really would love to look at refining a product, so. I and I think Marathon has done the same. So when we do go down this path, if we end up with something, both refineries local. Want to be part of the the solution. I just thought, you know, today I had a, you know, a call specifically on that. And I thought that was encouraging. So as we have this discussion, if we can find a process that. Gives us something that actually is usable, we have local refineries that are saying, hey, let us be part of this discussion. Let's be part of the solution. So I thought that was very encouraging.
Mayor Gear?
Yes, Ms. Walton.
Thanks. Yeah, that's great news. One of the things I'd like, I think the cost discussion is obviously very important. The one of the other factors that is listed is size of footprint. And I think that that as we go forward, knowing what large versus small footprint means in reality for what we have. Would be helpful in helping to decide too.
Mayor Gear.
Mr. Walters.
So while we're talking about these factors, one of the factors listed was odor generation. The community around the wastewater treatment plant. Is not a community that has higher real estate values because they're next to a water treatment plant to begin with. So I would like to not generate any more odors. Than it already does. I so I I would I would say that would be a high priority. If there are odor generating technologies on the list. Maybe we could strike those sooner rather than later.
So as we, if, these are all great suggestions. I'm I'm, Mayor Gear and I were talking last week before this. Needing, I don't even know how to move forward from 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 this point. I don't know how to. How to get all of these concerns in one place. I think I, so I'm going to need some help over the next couple of months figuring out. Exactly how this decision making process works, if it's a a council committee, if it's a citizen committee, if it's a, I don't know. Kind of open, we are open for suggestions.
Well, why don't you and I brainstorm in the next few days, and then council, of course, lean in with any thoughts. I think it's doable. We we built a plan before. We can do this again.
Mayor Gear.
Yes, Ms. Ms. Ireland.
Yeah, I I mean, I, again, I would just want to say, Mr. Buckmeyer and also your staff, that the fact that you brought it to us and are trying to. You know, get creative and look at opportunities is really, really important. I just go back to the fact, though, that, you know, predictability when it comes to ongoing maintenance and dependability. Obviously, we want to do whatever is, whatever will, you know, 20, 30 years length of time and and worry and. Be in compliance with ecology and whatever kind of environmental impact it has. But it's also just making sure that we have a proven science. Now, this this, the H. The HDL might end up a couple of years from now being that proven science, and then, yeah, we should go with it, but. It, you know, we're a small enough municipality that I feel like we need to kind of be. We need to do kind of advanced but middle of the road, right? Just so that things don't get out of hand. I know we've had a lot of success, and we've we're cutting edge on a lot of different fronts, but this is one of those that makes me a little nervous just because of that. When you talk about a five year transition, right, and leaving the incinerator up before we and making sure things are working before we can remove it. It just seems like a really important thing to get right. So kind of balancing out. Balancing out the predictability of costs and maintenance and our existing. Staff being able to service it is a is an important thing in my book at least.
Mayor Gear?
Ms. Walton.
I just want to say that I appreciate how tricky this is, Mr. Buckmeyer, because everything that council members have just said. Goes down the list of criteria, and we seem to be giving them all equal weight, so I I I don't know how this goes from here either.
Oh, that's comforting. I'm gonna need some help.
You got it. We're a good team.
Mayor Gear.
Mr. Walters.
Our next Public Works Committee meeting is is next Monday. You know, we could do a deep dive on this. Not for the purpose of making the decision for council, but for helping tease out some of these factors. And helping Public Works craft the next discussion in front of council.
The plan. Okay, so it sounds like Public Works is going to take it on. Fred and I are going to take it on, and we're open for any other just ideas. And we'll get it done by the end of the year. How's that? Any other, any other items tonight? All right, well, let's. Adjourn the meeting. Good to see everyone, and we'll be back on the, I believe it's the 7th of June. Well, next Monday is a holiday. So we'll be back the following week. So, all right, everyone, tonight.
Thank you.
During, take care. Bye bye.